Okay, I would like to call the May 21st, 2024 Wall City Council meeting to order. And I would like Carolyn to regrow call if you would please.
Dan Anderson. You said.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hock.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
Zach Kaufman.
Here.
Good job. Thank you. Let us stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Mike, would you be surprised to read this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the amazing states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carolyn, do we have order of business for emergencies?
No.
Do we have attendance on Zoom?
We have Councilman Zach Kaufman and Chamber Director Katie on Zoom.
Okay, and Katie's taking minutes for us. Does anyone have a conflict of interest this evening that they need to declare? Seeing none, I would call for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 7th City Council meeting that was in your packet and I'm sure you've reviewed.
Moved to approve.
Rick has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Also in your packet were the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library claims. Please take a moment to review those. And if you have reviewed those, would I have a motion to approve those claims?
One second.
Dan is moved. Mike has seconded. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same side, motion carries. Okay, also for your review, in the packet was the cash and money market balance in the new format that Carolyn created at the last meeting.
And we'll be doing some more adjustments just with conversation.
Okay. Okay. And also for your review was the expense budget. It was included. Were there any questions on either the cash and money market or the budget reports? Seeing none, brings us to item number 10, which is Tim Hartman with KLJ, and he's going to do some project updates, and he handed out a document earlier that should be at your place.
Thank you for having me tonight, Council. Yes, I guess the main update tonight, of course, is before that, the reconstruction project under construction will have going. It is moving along a little bit slower this week primarily due to the weather and just some kind of scheduling and coordination that I have to come back and work through as well. But with that, an update as far as construction goes, the underground utility work is basically completed. I say basically, there's a few little finishing things that they may be working on underground as well, but the bulk of all the water, sanitary and door and everything is all. So that went well. That's good to see that part of it done. You are seeing the gravel on the surface, that is the gravel cushion that will be under the actual concrete surface. So there'll be additional work and additional gravel brought in, but that's the start of what you're seeing there. So they'll keep working that, get the subgrade brought to grade, and then ultimately we're leading up to concrete paving operations being prepped and starting here very soon. We are still kind of working through that and don't have an exact date of when the concrete paper is going to be here, but as soon as next week, they're working on getting that set up. So that'll really kind of be crazy out there again for a little while, but start to see the project come together as the concrete goes down as well. With that, we have still, of course, kept just with the nature of the project and any project, but definitely an urban project, we still kept a high priority with just vehicle and pedestrian safety and access to an outdoor site. I think it's going well, certainly worked with, and as we talked before, construction is always a challenge, but I think it's going well and it'll be over soon. So thank you, everybody, for their patience there. With that, construction completion date is actually December. I just note that to kind of carry forward, we're not expecting any concerns going to be anywhere near that completion date. It is progressing along well. So with that, I guess as far as the Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project goes, main item of business for action tonight, as we do have the application for payment number three, total payment tonight is that $837,000. This makes up basically the bulk of the rest of the removals and a lot of that underground utility work. Some of the larger bid items is concrete paving and stuff that's still to come, but yeah, just kind of pressing on with the construction as it keeps performing. So KLJ has reviewed that with two separate contacts and they are ready to bring all of the application to payment.
So you do have that pay request in front of you. It's got several pages attached to that that denotes every item that you're talking about, and all of that adds up precisely to $837,949.71. Do we have any questions of Tim regarding this particular pay request? If not, do we have a motion? Okay, Jerry has moved to and Zach has seconded to approve the pay request number three for to Holstein for $837,949.71. Any other questions regarding this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a couple of real quick things, and this is kind of the fun part to talk through. With the Fourth Avenue project being full swing and pretty aggressive, it's certainly taken a lot of time, but I just did note the change in street signs in Echo Valley, we haven't forgotten about that. So we'll make sure we get that all taken care of, it's in process as well, and then project closeout down at the industrial park, I have been kind of working back and forth and in contact with the contractor that did the work down there. It's a reminder, the work is all done, has been accepted as we work through a few things, it's basically just a matter of balancing all the bid items and getting the project closed out. So certainly something that we're still tracking, like I said, I have a bit of touch with the contractor there as well, but just going to get it by. So we'll keep working on that, like I said, certainly not forgotten about, but did want to mention.
That have with all of the water, has there been any more agents with that sealing up that spot? Really, there's a little bit, but like there was.
There's a little bit, and I guess, yeah, Garrett's probably been in there a little bit sooner than I have, but we were seeing a little bit of sweating just before they said these.
And could you update just a dab on, is it Wall Lake Road or Drive that was a matter of conversation last time? Did we address that at all, or what are you thinking?
Yes, so we did kind of talk through that a little bit, looked through that with my team and talked with the city staff a little bit as well. There was a concern just about kind of the way the south side of Wall Lake Road was acting and some rutting and just looking a little bit different. As we look back at that, there's a couple of things that really stand out to us. First off, we did just go back and review the plans and specs and testing data and things like that for the construction. We did confirm that the contractor met all of the plans and specs and material testing, primarily densities, which is kind of what we're looking at there. And actually, any of them that, you know, they maybe were subpar during the testing, we actually had them fix those areas and come back and readdress it. So they did get everything built, two plans and specs. With that, a couple of key things to note, primarily due to budget, is my understanding, you know, I apologize, I think it's a part of the original parts of the project, but primarily due to budget, the north side of that project is actually all built with 12-inch gravel surfacing. And then as we kind of come out of that top radius and the straight stretch goes to the bottom, it actually goes down to four-inch gravel surfacing. And I bring that up, it was a good point to note as we, we got some [inaudible 00:01:32] because the gravel really is kind of the structural component of it. And that coupled with all the moisture, you know, and truck traffic can all coupled together, it is just showing a little bit different wear. With that, you know, we've recommended just kind of general maintenance, keeping a good crown on it, keeping the moisture off of it. And long-term, as the city kind of works through their budget and things like that, could certainly be a spot to add some more surfacing to it as well. But yeah, I guess any other questions, let's certainly discuss through and work through that, but certainly some of the info we found is.
So Garrett, you're good with all of that, and you guys are on the same page on that to keep that, because we certainly don't want to be dumping any trucks over trying to get up that road. That would be messy.
Is the company aware that we were concerned about it?
I did talk with them a little bit, and I'm going to drive it out actually out tonight too, just about that, and also I mentioned maybe as well, we'll make sure that grass comes in. That if we don't see, you know, good.
Okay. Any other questions?
No traffic issues on fourth?
Um, no, all in all, I think it's been pretty good. I don't know any constituency, you know, concerns and things like that, if I read on Garrett, the mayor to talk to as well, but all in all, good. There's been a few traffic control adjustments and things like that that we've worked through with the contractor, just with the nature of the project, but.
I seen a car go through there, looked like it was going 30 or 40 bumps and through across there as well. And then I did get a call, but oh, by the interstate, the sign had moved over. Why they called me, I don't have no idea, but.
Actually, it was supposed to be taken down, and it was in the ditch, yeah.
There's a road right, I was going to talk first about that, actually. It's, it's, looks like it's leaning a little bit. There's not, there's one that's up, but they might need a straight.
Are you talking about the big barricade?
Must have been, I'm sorry. And I drove by this morning, it was in the ditch, and then I drove by later, it was nowhere else.
It might have been a little bit. I checked it. I did see a road closed ahead that looks like the wind might have got it last week, and they need to adjust a little bit, but.
Because right now, through Memorial Day, the contractors actually want people driving on that and helping pack it, right? Not at 40 miles an hour necessarily, but going back and forth both lanes is perfectly all right?
Yep, absolutely. So yes, it is, and they still have signs up really close to through traffic, because it's a construction type, you're right, 40 miles an hour is probably not the best option. It can, it helps, you know, you guys and the residents just to have that income rent down when it's not needed, and also absolutely the wheel, wheel action on it can help help pack it in there as well, so definitely.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tim, for being here. Okay, that brings us to item number 12. We have an agenda request from Jim Tice. Would you like to address us? Welcome.
I'm Jim Tice, I live at 708 Glen Street. And I was here a couple of years ago with the concern about the traffic going down Glen Street. And summer's coming, so it's about time for the Penn Street Raceway to be open. And I know a couple of years ago, there was some efforts to put a flashing speed light down between Seventh and Sixth. And all that's done is I've been able to sit in my yard and see if they're going 40 or 50 before they get to the stop sign. And I called a young lady to check up on the status of this a couple of years ago, and she said, well, do you have any suggestions? And I said, yeah, why don't we put a stop sign on Seventh? Like if you go up North Street, every corner has a stop sign. Glen Street is a raceway. Her comment was they don't stop at the one on Sixth, why play another one? And I don't remember who the young lady was, she's not present, but. So anyway, when they come off the interstate, they see the 20 mile an hour speed limit sign, when they first come in, by the time they get past the motels and my house, majority were going 40, 40 miles an hour. When they leave Wall from downtown, once they get past the stop sign on Sixth, then they say how much speed they can get before they get to the interstate. Now I have grandkids that live across the street from me. There are hundreds of people staying at motels during the summer. They did paint a crosswalk on Seventh, but the people don't dare use it when there's line of traffic coming, because nobody stops. And they gotta just wait for the traffic to clear before they run across the street before the next bunch comes. And I don't know what can be done, I don't know, there can be speed bumps, rumble bars. I do think we need a stop sign on Seventh. At least we stop them in increments rather than let them gather speed before they get to town. Couple of years ago, the comment was from a lady, she said, well, we don't want to write too many tickets because we'll get known as someone that's turned to profit by tickets from picking up tourists. And it might slow down the tourist traffic. I don't know, I don't know what can be done, but I do think it's something that you guys need to look at because like I said, this been going on two years and I have not noticed one visiting. See, may I have any questions?
Jim? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Jim, I brought this up last week here about the speeding and everything that goes on Glen Street. And I'm totally with you, Jim. I, I think it's something that we really need to work on. I feel proper signage is a big thing, just like at those crosswalks. They are painted and stuff, but there's places like all around South Dakota, the small cities that have the flashing ones, when pedestrians get there, they can hit a button. And so then that crosswalk sign starts flashing, so people know that there's people at the crosswalk. Um, you know, I I just really think our first step should be at proper signage to get people to notice the actual road signs.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's something that can be done from the motel because there's no place to put a stop sign. That's where the motels come in and out. But that's where they gather speed from when they first come past the boulevard until they get to Sixth. And they're not even slowing down with some speed bumps.
I did reach out to the DOT and what it would take to extend our, the speed limits on 240, because that is the DOT that coming into town there from the south. Um, I, I'm having them check to see what it would take to extend the 20 mile per hour sign between Golf Course Road and Cemetery. So it'd be 20 miles per hour before they get to the cemetery, and then 35 miles per hour up to Lariat Drive. And then after Lariat Drive going to the south, to Badlands Drive, it would be 45. And then after that, it'd be up to 55 like it is on 240, the speed limit. But I am, I'm reaching out and just kind of seeing what kind of avenues we could take for that. Because my thought is if they get slowed down before they get under that bridge, then it might help us out quite a bit, because when they're coming into town, it's 35 all the way up until the auto delivery. And then there's a 20 mile per hour sign while they're just coming underneath the bridge and looking for signs where to go, but they overlook that speed limit sign. And I feel if we can get a 20 mile per hour speed limit on the south side of that bridge of the 110, then I think that would help us out.
Now, because there is a flashing light when you first come under the bridge by the, by the motel. That, they're just saying to think, okay, I went 20 when I went by there, but I don't have to go 20 the rest of the way. And it's just a concern, I, you know, I've got grandkids, neighbors across the street, their grandkids come to visit. We have a few dogs, we don't let them run, but it's just, me, it's a real hazard in a speedway.
Stop sign at Seventh, sounds kind of interesting. But I am wondering if it would back traffic up on the boulevard any, I, but that sounds, that sounds interesting to have one there. I'll be the first one to run it, but you'll get used to that, but I mean, but I would like to say one thing that my terms may, we don't get one penny, not one, from a speeding ticket in this town. That's terrible that we don't, I mean, because it should be a money-making deal for this town.
We had our own law enforcement that could.
Yeah, because after I was here a couple of years ago, they would have a sheriff that was set on the, on the street. I think all summer I saw him stop two people. Now I know there was more than two people going past 20. And I'm not criticizing the law enforcement, I'm just trying to figure out what can be done, because it's not a a new issue, it's an old issue that's been going on and on. And I'm getting older and it's harder for me to cross the street to see my grandkids. I don't move as fast as I used to.
People simply wouldn't cross for me, like, oh, hey. Patrol car was parked in front of her house and they still run the stop sign, they run the stop sign and they're still speeding, so I don't know.
Yeah, you would know more than anybody if.
I can see when they go by the window if they're going to make it stop sign or not.
So I don't know what, I mean, the comment was why put one on Seventh, because they run the one on Sixth, but I think if there was something else to stop them before they got the next block in increments, it's like, I don't know, people from coming into town, going to take them 20 seconds longer to get to part of downtown. Anyway, I appreciate whatever you guys can come up with, we try to keep you informed.
I think we're, I mean, by looking at the police report, I mean, we have a lot of warnings given. And I think that we tried a number of different things between signage and whatnot. And I think we just get together with law enforcement, I mean, and start enforcing it a lot more. I don't ever see law enforcement sitting on Glen Street.
Well, I was here two years ago, and about two weeks after, after the meeting, the mayor, the Epstein mayor, went by about 50 miles an hour going out of town. I hollered and waved at him, but he just kept going, but it's don't know whether, you know, and I don't know why everybody's so opposed to speed bumps. I hate speed bumps. I tell you what, it slows me down. So anyway, I'm done.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing.
Thanks, Jim.
Concern forward, and, and we will need to visit about this. Because you're right, we're just getting started for the year on tourists. And we don't, yeah, speed in that area is just not a good thing, not a good thing. So.
Great, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public comments, and this is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns with any issue that's not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to address this. Is there anyone that would like to address the council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. It is our privilege tonight to have a proclamation, and I would like the ambulance service and board folks that are here, if you'd come over beside Jim or Jerry, behind Jerry here, we'd like to do a proclamation. And the purpose of this is, this is the 50th anniversary of the EMS Week, which is May 19th to the 25th. And the city of Wall would like to designate this week as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Service System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergence, or yeah, emergency medical, medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, oops, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. The members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Mary Williams, Mayor of Wall, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. In honor of this week, I encourage our whole community to observe this week with appreciation for the Wall Ambulance, the Wall EMTs, Wall Paramedics, Wall First Responders, and the Wall Board of Directors. With that, we will present this proclamation. Who would like to accept?
Congratulations.
Thank you, and we so appreciate what you.
Thank you. Can you have?
Sure. Thank you.
So I have been taking. I did, well, she was shaking.
Yeah.
We're smiling. All right, Mary, you need to get in there a little bit more too.
No, we didn't, maybe your lines are really.
No, I think you're.
Good luck.
Okay. One more.
We're on a three-picture. Take them wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then, do we have an ambulance report this evening? Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for doing this. I don't know if you guys know it, but it's a big case anniversary for EMS week, it's nationwide. Anyway, the report for April. Looks pretty sad. The total number of calls were received in April of four, which is one was canceled, so we just put it on three patients. So by the end of April, I'm gonna compare years, this year and last year. So the end of April twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-three calls. The end of April of twenty twenty-four. We have total of twenty-four calls, so we. Uh, nine fewer calls this year compared to last year, which is, it's twenty-eight percent down. So. It's not. The line is not going up. It's keep going down. So anyway. As you know right now, that this week is a EMS week. And our crew held a class today, actually Lori, uh, she was the one who gave the proclamation. Um, she presented a class for middle school today um. On stop the waves. Trying to get ourselves into the community. Then another news, uh, you guys know we raised enough money for the Lucas, which is a chest compression system. We finally received it a few days ago. So our plan is to invite all those people who donated money for this device. And take a picture and uh, we planning to take a picture on June tenth, uh, at six P M at the end one shed. So if you, the natives, we're gonna probably gonna be calling it, which is. And last, but not least, uh, so we had a board meeting last night. And in the last night board meeting, we decided to start advertising for part-time uh, director position. Uh, so I'm gonna try to get it out in the next week or so.
Lily, what was the part-time position?
I direct our position.
Oh, very good.
So, yes, we. Went through this for the whole year, we figured out what we need, so I think we're ready to advertise now. Anyway, that's all I have for the ambulance. Do you have any questions? Don't like the cost. Drive themselves to the. Anyway.
Well, with the way the tourists are increasing, I just can't believe that. Your numbers aren't gonna.
Little bit better, so, but I mean, it's majorly first already. Not a lot either, I don't know exact number, but. Not much. We have to see. As I said, I keep talking about it every single meeting I come here and we need no calls. Not quite sure what we need to do. Let's spread the word. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thanks, Lynn. Okay, um, we still have some uh, concern forms that are out there. The first one on the um, agenda is Hillcrest. And again, when he's back here, it's raining and when he leaves, he could. And he's not able to work, he's not been able to get in. And do the work he'd like, but I did go visit with the people that. Had brought this to our attention and may help them understand. What the situation was, that it will be taken care of and it will be mowed. So that's where we're at on that one. The next one is on this.
Jim, I'll let you talk about that a little bit, anything with the with the rough stuff you were still trying to leave messages for the contractor.
Yeah, he told me he was gonna follow me over it the other day, so.
Okay. That would take us then to the Glen Street situation, which Garrett, you, the public works, didn't. Get the curb painted yellow. And you've painted the lines on the. Uh, street, so that's definitely addressing the mailbox concern that was brought to us. Um, this last summer. Is there any other um, progress or anything, Rick, that?
Not that I'm aware of.
That you're aware of?
No.
Okay, so that's where that's at. And then I did ask Carolyn to send out the sidewalk ordinances. Uh, for everyone to review in terms of what the requirements. According to our ordinance are for construction or repair. And Part B's uh. In that paragraph. Or that section certainly addresses what could be done. And um. Also, I found some further information in chapter sixteen regarding sidewalks two. This uh, all came from uh, chapter twelve. So hopefully, everybody had a chance to review that. Okay, that brings us to item number seven seventeen, which is bids on garbage service. And Carolyn, would you update us where we're at on that today?
Um, we did receive a bid and just one bid, actually. Bid came from Sanders. So, my first proposal is on the transfer station. Um, says that the proposal is a lease payment of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per month. For the leasing of the transfer station. He uh, feels it's an important part of the. Public Works infrastructure and serves the community.
Carolyn, what was that a moment ago?
Two thousand nine hundred and fifty per month. The garbage collection service, I, on the. Say the rubble, tonnage, that's what I want to say, sorry, tonnage. I'll maybe let him address this because I'm not sure if I read through it.
Oh, still the transfer station?
Yes.
Yeah. My proposal is twenty-nine fifty a month. With no royalty being paid until it exceeds a hundred and twenty tons. Per month, if it exceeded a hundred and twenty tons, then I would pay a ten dollar ton royalty to the city. Uh, that represents a very predictable revenue stream for the city, one that you can base budgets off of. Uh, and there's no downside to that, it's only an upside if volumes would increase. The way that it currently is in our growth in the market, I gotta believe volumes to the transfer station have been declining. Uh, in turn, I have to assume that the revenues to the city of Wall also been declining due to the reduction of tonnage. So, in my proposal, I kind of wanted to shore that up where there wasn't uh, the variance to the city.
So currently. The lease amount that we are getting is seventeen fifty. So if you take that out of the twenty-nine and fifty that he's proposing. That leaves us a twelve hundred dollar revenue on the tonnage based on. Does that make sense?
How many, is that, is that an increase?
It would be an increase, just, I mean, I don't have that. Those in front of me, but just.
Same increase over a couple thousand over twenty twenty-three totals.
Yeah, okay.
And I can only believe that run rate is mainly declining for twenty twenty-four due to our increased volume of collection.
I, that makes sense, I see what you're saying.
How many tonnes? Current or like in the last?
They don't provide us with the tonnage. Um, I, you know, I guess I do know what we get paid per ton, I'd have to do the calculation on it, but I can't do that. Yes, but I mean, I'd have to do the calculation per month, what it was, and then he got me back to it, so I. I guess um. We're just gonna go. Well, I've just used nine hundred dollars, which that's on the high side. By that, by eight dollars a ton, I said, right? It's a hundred and twelve. Then. And if you have more questions for him, or I'll go back to the garbage collection or go to the garbage collection bid at this time if you want. He says each resident will receive a ninety-six gallon tote with a wind latch. That will keep lids closed and help keep the community clean from wind blow debris from totes with lids open. Price per home is twenty-six forty. No charge for the containers and the city cleanup is included. Other key benefits, portable toilet services for special events. At no charge, is that what you're saying? Um, establishment of a scholarship fund of a thousand dollars. Investment local community vendors, those people working for South Dakota company owned by South Dakota business owners.
So would that be passing a savings on to our residents then?
What's that, sir?
Um, with your bid and everything, would that be passing on it like, um. Would it be lower for our residents for their city bill per month?
No.
No, I'd say the same.
Well, I don't believe so. Currently, it's twenty-one seventy-five is what we charge. And if. They're proposing twenty-six forty. The twenty-one seventy-five is a little above what we are currently charged. So, because we have to pay tax, sales tax on the garbage collection side of things. So we just rounded it up, you know, so that we knew we had the sales tax covered, we have to pay that. So, no, the household rate would would have to go up.
So Carolyn. Right, right now, it's twenty-one seventy-five, the household rate. Then would it go to the twenty-six forty?
A bit more, maybe. Might go to twenty-seven.
More like twenty-seven?
If she rounds up to cover tax.
To round out, I'm gonna say it'd have to go like to twenty-seven fifty.
It's almost six bucks or five.
How long has it been at the twenty-one?
Long time.
Everything else goes.
So, so we've been at the twenty-one seventy-five for a long time.
You know, we weren't charging any increase on water for like almost six to eight years. And of course, garbage, well, these last three years that we put, increased the water rates. We've still not increased the garbage, so.
So.
I would say. Just off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and see the history of it, I would say the last twelve years have been that rate.
I would guess so.
Hear about it. Five dollars, five seventy-five is not. Really much for as long as you've been not, we kind of got our hands spanked for not raising the water. And people didn't understand that. And that was for grants and stuff, was it not? And how long, everything has gone up a lot more than that.
How many households are there?
Um.
Three hundred fifty-seven, which is a community where that goes up. Twenty to thirty during the summer. How many? What's that? How, what was the number? Three fifty-seven. With some fluctuation during the summer.
Right.
What are the size of the containers we have now? Ninety-sixes.
Okay, so. Help me understand. Wait, our garbage has to be uh, hauled out of here and it, where's it been going? And would it continue to be hauled there or?
Cause waste connection domes are all handled in Nebraska. So they were transferred to the transfer station. All in. Down to Olal, Nebraska.
Okay. So do we, do you have an agreement with Rapid City then?
Sure, yeah. Rapid City does not restrict where waste come from.
Okay.
Comment or suggestion, I. And I don't know how realistic this is, I'm just throwing it out there since. Since we are. Putting. An increase to our residents, if there could be something. In the contract um. That. You know. It wouldn't increase. Any more than two percent each year or something, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Well, as you. I'm sure aware with all the construction going on in the community, um. The cost of doing business has went up exponentially. So, the, the. The benefit to the community has been to. Not have a price increase on your waste, I'm gonna say for probably ten years. There are two, five-year contract cycles. Uh, that's not reality in today's market, just not. Cost of. They talk about inflation being three percent. Uh, not in my world. Okay, tires are up seventy-eight percent year over year, cost of equipment. Twenty percent year over year, cost of liability insurance, ten to fifteen percent year over year. Cost of wages. It's not three percent, so. Um, the, the reality is, uh. You know, I think the fact that we were making a commitment to be here. And then a company that sold your trash for twenty years plus, didn't even turn in a bid. Speaks to the economic conditions of. You know, rural South Dakota waste hauling. So. Um, I don't want to be dismissive of that, but um. I'm certainly wanna have some reasonable constraints on price. But there's a lot of things I don't control. You know, to say that I would only increase it, you know, one, two percent, that, that isn't reality.
So this is a five-year contract. And. There is a clause that it, there can be a. Cost of living. For.
We can index it to.
There is currently not.
That wasn't part of our bid that. And you, that's not what yours.
Every, every city contract I have has some cost of living adjustment.
Okay.
Some of them are fixed, a fixed percentage, some of them are fixed at what the um, CPI index is.
And he has this cost of. Living in there.
So we would have to write the, the agreement again to.
Okay.
That, and we have to make the change in the agreement, because like currently it does say whatever amount it is, so. There're gonna have to be some changes and then. Included in there. I don't know, I'd have to look at the verbiage for the containers type thing and. And all those things in there that you would want to. If, if this is his proposal like this. Scholarship fund or things like that, I think you'd want that to be included in.
Exactly.
And this becomes effective if, assuming we go that route.
So at this point, what we need to do is approve this bid. And then that will lead us to a contract?
This bid. This bid pending also like getting, coming to an agreement with the contract, I would say, you know, you're gonna wanna look at it again and actually include these things within there since this is his proposal. You're gonna have to get this verbiage in there.
Okay.
Would you agree, Fred?
Yeah, no, we would, I would think that you would agree to accept a proposal and enter into contract negotiations. Um, you know, that's, that would kind of be out in the playoff.
Well, and I think it's pretty important to, we've worked with you in the past when you were with other companies that we I always appreciated the relationship that we had with you. If anybody had a question, if you had a question for us, you made yourself available. I've always been able to call you directly. You've answered the phone. So, you know, if there's ever any issues with the transfer station, they were resolved, you know, pretty quickly. So that's appreciated. Like the community's commitment is.
I told you it was coming. Now we're here.
So also you had mentioned before that, of course, there'd be extra charge of that, but you have other services available to the community.
Yeah, um, trading company, portable toilets, I mean, septic, hill septic, we go all over. We're large septic company in South Dakota. It sounds more impressive than it is, but I don't like to say that. As you say, I'll take shit out, nobody now has one every day.
Did you say you're going to donate them during your wall service?
The toilets, the toilets, yeah.
And that's very generous of you to donate those porta potties to us and also doing the scholarship as well.
No, I love doing that in small communities. Um, I, I love doing that, giving back. And being part of that is, it, it is important. It's important to me personally, having kids um, going through educational and, and so their friends not having some of the advantages that my kids have had and some of their ability to choose economical pursuits. So anything that we can do to do that, or I can do to do that, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to partner with that. I want to be your community partner.
And also included in there, maybe I missed it, but is the garbage cans on Main Street then?
Yes, yes, it is. It's included in that process. You're looking at me, Mayor, well, you got a question?
I have a question. I wanna know if those garbage cans or the trash cans on Main Street will be picked up five days a week?
That's the plan to make you happy in those five days or Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday?
Is that, oh, yeah.
Would that be all right?
Well, I'll make sure that happens. I might be down here. And wave at you, here.
Thank you. What time would that be?
Some day to him and why.
So Carolyn, what would we approve this pending, working out the details or how do we?
Well, he kind of said, uh, entering into, you could have shady.
Finalized contract.
Finalized contract.
I'd make that motion.
That's right.
Okay, Mike has moved and Stan seconded to accept the bid from Sanders.
Sanders.
Stan Dur. Any other questions or comments?
Do you handle medical?
No, no.
So we wouldn't really, you would still handle the football claiming, I mean, or would they?
Yeah, well, it's, I don't know the specifics of the law play.
Myself either.
I think they pay a service for some of their stuff. That's usually
They're, they're, um, if they have genuinely biohazard waste, they're contracted with somebody to handle that. Um, it's not going
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded? Seeing no further questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you and welcome to our community.
Thank you. We're hard to re, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So just another question in regards to the septic things and the shredding, if they, people want to use that service, they just you call your number?
Sure, yeah, we all, it all flows out of one office.
Gotcha.
If it's a septic customer, the lines of calling Sanders will, they'll just patch him over. That person isn't the one who
So you have an office in Quinn now?
I do.
And then you, and then you have an other office in Rapid City? Okay. Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Fred, is, is your shredding company a different name?
A to Z shredding.
Oh, A to Z, we use them, they're great.
A to Z school. It's onsite shredding. Just paying at the spots this week. We're already growing that in this one.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Item eighteen is a pool diving board. You have that in your packet. The cost for twelve-foot aluminum diving board? Because there are other ones not in good condition. Is that true, Garrett?
Adhesive part of the shop is coming off. And also there's two big rust holes in the bottom where, where it attaches, so.
And so the reason you have, have this approved is because the cost plus freight is gonna put us over probably five thousand? Perhaps?
Well, I guess I thought the bid that they had, but they paid right away.
Passed down, I sped you.
Oh, yeah.
Your next number, break with me.
So, any other questions about, um, new diving board?
There. Yes, sorry. Yeah, sorry, um, freight will be additional, but she couldn't give me that amount until after it's been shipped. But it does have to be paid for before it's shipped. So there'll be a bill afterwards, just so you know.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Dan is moved and Mike has seconded to purchase a new aluminum diving board. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. All right, in your packet also was the twenty-twenty-three annual report that Carolyn, um, has submitted. Have you submitted this already?
No, I have submitted it after
After we approve it, okay? So, uh, has everyone had an opportunity to look this over and do you have any questions that you'd like to have answered regarding this? Annual report.
So I'm just gonna comment, um, see on the left-hand side is the general fund budget and the other governmental funds in the middle is like includes fire, library, cemetery, any of those that are included in the general fund. So our revenue was seven million four hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The expenses were, um, eight million fifteen roughly. So it shows a decrease or shortage of one million five hundred. But I did want to point out that we received right after into January, another pay on the wall on the airport, you know. So the, the timing is just, had it shown up a few days early, that amount would have looked a lot better. So, um, it was collected quite quickly after the end of the three budget, so. It really should reflect quite as bad as it has been. And that was one million one hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and sixty that we received. And then at the bottom, it just shows you the bank balances that you have left hand of twenty-three. Other than that, if you have questions, I'll write these things out here.
And this will be published for us after we approve this tonight?
Yes, this is in this form.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of
Zach has moved.
Good.
Stan seconded. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next item is a lease agreement. Would you like to, um, explain this, Carolyn, please?
This is the land agreement that we used to have. There, we'll probably explain it better. It's connected to the
Yep, so our, we have our two balloons up here and then overflow goes all the way out to the exit one sixteen south of the Minuteman missile site.
And so we're unable to fence it off. And so typically the person who has the lease portion portion
For certain.
Is usually who we get that lease agreement with, and this happens to be Eisenbrow cattle that have it now, so. It's no longer blue.
You're just assuming that lease.
He has accepted it actually and signed off on it. We just need to sign and he's, he's paid, so.
Any other questions?
You have to approve the lease agreement.
Okay, Dan is moved. And Jerry has seconded to approve the, um, lease agreement between Eisenbrow Cattle Company and the city of La Malle.
Real quick, man.
Oh, yes.
They, they saw that, that section or section three, item B with they can't exceed over a hundred and seventy animal units of cow calf care. They were good with that?
You know, I never had a question. That's always
Let it stand.
Yeah.
That probably is, um, determined by the force service, if this is force service line anyway, perhaps. So okay, so we've moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, uh, we have some, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five package on sale, off sale, malt beverages in South Dakota farm wine. Uh, for Dakota Sky Stone, Jackalope Corner, Wall Discount, C nine, Red Rock.
All discounts, we may get off here, but they are not there.
Oh. Okay, please strike that. Okay, so it is Dakota Sky, Jackalope and, and Red Rock, C nine, correct? Would I have, um, who said that? Mike, Mike moved, Jerry seconded to approve the on-sale, off-sale malt beverage and farm wine. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay. Item number twenty-two, beer liquid liquor garden permits for Red Rock Restaurant and Wall Golf Course. Okay, Jerry has moved and Stan Stan seconded. Um, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, item number twenty-three is a noise permit for Red Rock.
Move to approve.
Okay, Dan moved. Zach has seconded. Any questions?
So were we gonna address the time? You on that, or is there one on that one?
There is on all of them.
Which, what, which one did not have the time? Do you remember that? It was
Aren't they two AM?
Actually, one.
One.
One o'clock?
Exactly. I thought it was two, but they're all
Has Red Rock had ones in place?
Yes.
They've had them out front, I think.
Yeah, their front patio thing is what they are. Okay. Any other questions then? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, we also, um, need to show in our minutes for the bank to, that we have approved uh, the mayor, the finance officer, the council president and council vice president to be able to, um, to sign the signature cards, uh, to sign checks for the bank. When I have a motion to approve.
Someone.
Mike has moved.
Good.
And Dan has seconded. Any questions about that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. So you'll get signature cards or these folks will have to go to the bank and sign?
Yeah, I'll call the bank after I get the minutes put together, so I'll need them. And then, um, when they have all that paperwork together, I'll let people know to stop by and sign.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, the Legion request for Memorial Day services. Tell us about that, Carolyn.
Well, this was their request last year and they have requested it. Typically, they always left the community center after the program and went up cemetery and there was gun salute and program. Last year, they asked if they could do it in the parking lot. Um, I guess you guys approved it. And so they are asking to do their gun salute in the parking lot over here. They'll kind of have it blocked off the area. And then they do want to set chairs out for people to sit um, in the reserved parking, reserved city employee parking that day. And so if you guys approve it again, I would like to just drop a reservation for it, so we don't have to do this every year. But I just didn't want to do that yet since it was a one-time request last year. And I wasn't sure how it was spelled. If we had any concerns, if anybody made any comments on it during
Didn't, didn't they used to have it out at the cemetery?
Yep.
But they lost a lot of their people between here and there.
Yeah, it's hard, parking is very difficult in the cemetery.
I, I didn't hear anything negative about it, but I just wanted to
I heard people make positive comment about it being closer to town and people with chairs and stuff.
Yeah, that's nice.
Out of there, parking, there's plenty of parking. I would make that a motion.
Okay, Mike has moved.
Second.
And Jerry seconded. Any other questions or concerns?
So you, what, next meeting, we'll come back with a resolution then, okay?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. What time is that event on Monday? Is it one o'clock? Here? It's ten o'clock in Quinn, their Memorial Day, and I wasn't sure if it's one or one-thirty. But they have a very nice service.
While we wait for her, we will get it cleaned up over there and put cones out. Sunday, Sunday.
Good, I think. And then I was gonna say help and get chairs out there. Um, because I, I don't know that they did chairs last year, but that would make it a lot nicer this year uh, to have that. So, okay, we'll try to, um, get that information out. Uh, make sure you know about that. Okay.
Think we could share that on our Facebook.
Facebook, yeah. Chamber and Economic Development, good. Okay, finance officer report. Carolyn. Carolyn.
Hey, um, so Tracy Fras had asked um. After. Bailing the industrial park, he got the bid on the alfalfa. If he could. Re get him to get him off there. Place them over um. The west side of the baseball fields. And um, I said I'd have to ask at a council meeting. That wasn't something I could just. Well, he did first ask if we were gonna put the. Hey ground up to bid and I said we hadn't made a determination on that because we were kind of still waiting for. The grass that was planted to do something and and that. So I said I'd have to come to the council with it and ask the questions, so. Don't know what your thoughts are.
I'd like to take someone out there to look. There's plenty of. There's plenty of ground to hay that will need to be. Cut and done.
Well, I think the airport committee had some input on this. And um had indicated not to hit this year.
Right.
But they would. Reconsider that, but. So what are you saying then?
I'm saying that. I'm saying something.
Look at the runway there. You know, you still got that huge area by the ball fields. You still got that huge area in between the crosswind and the runway. And then you got the big area from the runway all the way over to the interstate and then from the runway all the way over to Fourth Avenue. So it didn't, I mean.
Yeah, we just we just don't want to hate the new.
The new.
This is all the old hay stuff.
Yeah, this would be. So this is this this is just the area affected here. So they still have this, this. And this area. That would need. Else we'll have a bunch of. Dead alfalfa.
Okay.
Because and this is, I mean. Let's see. This is pretty good alfalfa through here and then I think this is pretty good through here too.
Where does he want to stack the bills?
I think I think he wants to stack right here.
Behind the ball field there.
But I think it's just because it's. Easy to get in and out. But I think he could, I think we could do the same thing here too. He can stack them here. I don't.
Because if he pulls in. If he pulls in there now and we let that for bid, he's driving on somebody else's hay. Would that be correct? Okay.
So yeah, I would, we need to hay it, but stay away from. And it's coming up pretty good. And we decided to bid and do that probably next meeting.
I wouldn't have time next meeting. I have to get it advertised, so.
Well, as soon as you can then.
I, yeah, I mean, I could say.
Say meeting in June. Be kind of hard to determine how many acres there is.
I was gonna say, somebody's gonna have to get that figured out pretty good and.
Second meeting would be. I mean, I can get it to the paper tomorrow. And. Make note in there that um. There will be some areas restricted, you know, just due to the.
Do you want me to? Want me to talk to him to see what his reasoning? What that is and tell him that.
Yeah.
The airport might be available to.
We may intend, we may end up bidding it. And therefore he probably needs to stay on the industrial park side and. Yeah, until.
Because that's where like when he does, when he does cut the airport, that's where he.
And that makes sense then, but.
Maybe you could just well work out with with him or. Put his bales to. That would be.
I'll talk to him and see then.
Okay.
Um, then. Tomorrow. Mid morning I'll be heading. To my South Dakota Municipal Board Meeting, which is actually just in Kadoka this year because Harry Weller is the president on that. For this year, so it's always hosted in the hometown of the president, so. We'll be going to that um and then the following week, of course.
And you'll be back on Thursday?
Be back on stage.
Okay.
Hoping I have an appointment with my South Dakota people for training against at ten o'clock, so. Back in the office by then. Um, the following week is the Memorial Day holiday and. I'm gonna be real sporadic in the office. I actually booked myself out for the whole week, but I will be in part of it to get payroll done and stuff, but. That hopefully my daughter get ready for her wedding, so. And there has been a change in the garbage pickup for that next week. They will not be picking it up on Thursday. We have put this out on Facebook already. I'm not be picking up on Friday instead because of the holiday. Monday moves everything back. Um, but I will be sending out code.
Friday though, gonna be Friday the what?
The thirty-first.
Thirty-third.
And. In the bill list tonight, there was. Conference fees for attending the HR and Finance Officer meeting and that's the June eleventh. I will be attending for that. And then um, I think we need to look at dates in July for our meetings. And, you know, people want to just kind of review and. Make sure to have something figured out by the June sixth. Meeting, I'm fine with that, but I just want to get this on your radar. Uh, because July fourth would be the normal meeting, but that's a holiday, so not in favor of scheduling a council meeting on a holiday. And then the next week, of course. We would just move it a week. That's celebration, so I didn't know.
What about that Tuesday? The ninth.
And that's, you know, what I.
That be better than. Right before celebration, probably would be better.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. And then for the second meeting, I didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and. Still continue to have it on the eighteenth or if you wanted to. Be. Follow suit and have it on a Tuesday again. I just.
On the twenty-third?
I'm guessing I won't be on the twenty-third.
What is the?
That's by.
Oh, you're saying you won't be home. Or you won't be able to attend on the twenty-third?
Just guessing.
Did did last year, did we just do one July meeting?
You know.
I think we did, didn't we? Last year we just did one July meeting because there's so much stuff going on.
Oh. What would be a good time to have the one meeting? I like the sound of that.
So with maybe do a. What? Would work.
Yes, I. I think the sixteenth is good. You hate to have too really because there are a few that you can see by the list tonight. You just view the straggling. I'm fine with.
Yeah, because. Because if we move that second meeting, then we're running right into the August meeting and not really gaining anything. Sixteen.
Sixteenth then is what we're gonna say? Is that okay with everybody? Okay. Alright.
So I would, if you're comfortable with that change, I would ask you for that motion to. Have one meetings in July. So that people are aware.
I'll make that motion.
Rick has moved.
Second.
And Dan seconded to have one meeting in July and that be July sixteenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Who seconded that?
Okay.
Have we had any land sales?
Yes. Thank you for that reminder. Um, yeah, and actually we just got three checks. Last week or something for Echo Valley. Um, so that's a total of five lots sold in Echo Valley. Eighty-three thousand dollars is what we've gotten from sales in Echo Valley. And um. Still. There will be one more lot sold. I mean, you approved a building permit for it in Hanson subdivision. The closing just hasn't happened yet for us to actually get that. Okay, but currently we've. Still have the five that have been sold and closed on and a total of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty has been. Received for those.
Okay. Alright. Anything else in Carolyn?
Just gonna skip through there. No.
Okay, Garrett, you're on.
Well, like Mary said, we painted that curb yellow over there and we painted all the crosswalks, all the lines on Main Street. Glen Street, North Streets. Um, and I. Looked and I did find some, had some crosswalk signs. From. I think this one. And they wanted to get rid of the stop signs. On Glen five years ago. There was a bunch of signs there, so I'll look into putting those up.
Okay.
On spots and probably have to order some water, but. That's about it for. Painting. Uh, last week when it was kind of raining, did a little workout at the ball fields. We. Put some chips down around the. The T-ball dugout, replaced the benches on the T-ball dugout and smoothed everything up and. Took all the bleachers out on the big field and all the benches and backdrove that. Mine ran into the fence with the skid steers. I gotta go fix that. Uh, both.
Mosquitoes doing well out there?
Uh, yeah, they're doing pretty good out there. I've also been baiting mosquitoes, you know, putting pellets in the water, but. And there was a. I was out there mowing and there was a few, I think there's quite a few mosquitoes out.
When do we usually start bogging? Oh, sorry, Jerry.
Yeah, I'd. It's kind of a waste of money if there isn't that many mosquitoes out. I mean, it's. This stuff just kills them if they fly through it. Um. I did go to Warren Chemical last week and I. Parked to the knowledgeable Tim Johansson and. We found a combination of stuff we can spray like. Where all the cattails are out by the uh football field, spray that. It leaves a residual because, you know, they go in there during the daytime when it's hot. And then other. Aquatic areas where I can't. You know, get those burquets to do any good because it's, I mean, there's a huge one where Golden West, the triangle is and it's just you can't. You can't do anything for those really, so. Working on that. At the bogger was. Was tested, was the last one, I think it was. So it's ready to go. Um, then as we start seeing more, I will go out. And do that.
You'd probably sink it, yeah. Didn't do it anyway.
Um, then other than that, we've been doing a little mowing. And getting pool ready to open, you know, we got a new diving board and we started draining it and cleaning it this week. We kind of. Let the pump go and clean it as we do other things. Um, and we did put a little. Put some gravel down on Bentley Road. It was getting pretty bad. We've been using the. They call them chips from the airport, but it just has chunks of asphalt in it. It's good place for us to make it. I don't know if you guys noticed I live at the AD building. I don't know what it looked like the next day, but. Not where. And then I was contacted by, or actually Mary brought it to my attention about Badlands where I have been. Out where Darwin Harry lives. When I first started, we were told to stay off that road, that they would take care of themselves. And so I talked to Ryan and he was okay. And then I talked to. To Darwin and he would like us to leave that first stretch by his house alone because he likes a certain kind of rock and he's willing to do that. And so we will. Will maintain it and lay it and and so then we did put some of that rock from. From Darwin's all the way to. And Kirsten's old house where Ryan lives, so. I'm getting quite a bit done.
You guys are doing a lot of stuff and the baseball diamonds looks really nice.
We're gonna work on. Starting fixing the fence where all the poles are bent. We did a few of that.
Very appreciative of the baseball fields. Um, it got brought up right away by. Um, coaches and uh parents about the work being done out there. So thank you guys.
I would like to say something. Had a gal in town that uh. Drove up the street with the end of the sound because I was being elected down. She lost her three hundred dollar cooler. Thanks to the city people, they picked it up. I'm embarrassed. It was, it was pretty tempting to keep it. Probably the best thing to ever foul on. Very odd because. Who was that cooler? And I had to go Brandon, so I stopped. I must have forgotten. I stopped back in Saturday and. Well, she said I noticed that tailgate down. We were eating supper Saturday night and I told my granddaughter, you wanna hear something disgusting? No, but go ahead. I said, we lost our cooler. I don't know what happened to it. Jane, my daughter says, well, I seen a post that somebody found one in law. So thank you, Mary. I heard there was a pretty good reward.
Pretty good hint there.
What was that? It was on the road all the way to.
Fertilizer.
Oh, nice. Looks like they they caught it right on the on-ramp.
Yeah. Yeah, they probably would have been. I feel very good if they made it all the way home.
Well, I think they. Probably did get a little ways down the road, didn't they?
Well, they made it all the way. Well, it's weird. It started right at the intersection of Glen and Fourth. And then it went all the way up to the one-ten on-ramp.
Yeah, they were heading west and about halfway up on that on-ramp. You can see what they.
Yeah, they're pretty good piled.
Yeah.
They said a woman in a ruined van stopped them. I'm not sure who that would be, but. That was one of Dakota Mills' own trucks and they sure went up and swept it up, put it on there. Or that's. Quite expensive, but uh. They were working on it again today. And then we did. I don't know why it came open, but then they showed it so far. It went past. It was quite a battle.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. You guys have.
Well, good job, Garrett. You guys have been busy, busy, busy. Okay, moving on to the mayor report then. Our fly-in was very successful. It was a beautiful day. Um, and it was great to see the airport committee, the chamber, economic development, public works, city council. Ambulance and fire people all working together. Um. I understand Lily, what was the free will donation amount that?
It was fourteen hundred dollars, I think.
And I think the ambulance and fire were gonna split that, so that was a. A wonderful gesture on the part of the people that were there, but seriously. Okay. So um, a great attendance by the community as well as the pilots. It was great to have lifelight and air advantage in there. Uh, and watch them land those planes and um. The advertisement that we got for our new runway and for the possibility of hangar leases. Available. It it just went very, very well. Almost all of you attended. What did you think of it? What was? Dan, thank you for driving the bus. For heaven's sakes, you made what, three loops?
There were. Found the other people, the. Girls that I picked up from Perry Village and they just thought that was the greatest thing ever. They were impressed by all the planes and. Stuff and yeah, it was. stuff, and yeah, it was, it was cool.
It was nice, it we needed more drugstore donuts, but I live in that.
I I heard they went fast.
Well, I did have one pilot say, come on, if Hot Springs can afford fuel at their airport, so can Wal. But I did hear that one.
And I had quite a few comments about that as well, and they said, so why don't you have fuel? And I said, well, it's in our airport plan. You know, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand in our airport plan, and we only have to pay five percent of that if we let the F A do it, of course. We pay it for us on our own, a bid has come in for three hundred and fifty thousand. Which way do you think we should go?
The best thing I can say about that airport, yeah, we're gonna get some new coffee pots.
I had a had a couple of pilots um asked me if we were gonna make it an annual thing, they they really wished we would.
Stan, you visit with a lot of pilots, what?
Yeah, well, they, uh, everybody thought it was great, yeah, I mean, they and there was lots of locals looking around and no, it's a good deal.
Did anybody get a total number on the planes that came in?
Dave said he thought between forty and fifty.
Dave was out there directing traffic all day.
Air traffic control.
And Preston let the little kids go in his airplane and stuff and and liflight, too, that was really cool. I know my kid really enjoyed it.
Yep, kids thought that was pretty neat to get to go in them planes.
I still think that would be a dynamite place to have drag racing during the
Well, that would be a federal offense, Jerry, so let's not go there.
Just once.
Just once, yeah, that's all you're gonna get, enjoy. So anyway, it was, it just really went well, and uh it was well received, and I so enjoyed the Hot Springs manager that wanted wants that wall drug sign that says sixty-eight air miles to Wal Drug, and he wants to put it up at his airport.
I'm working on the.
I thought that was dope. So, okay, and planning and zoning, uh met on May fourteenth. The um consultant completed the draft and sent it to the committee yesterday. We, the committee is to read and give it uh give feedback, we'll be meeting June eighteenth for the final review, so we have covered information we've all learned, it's been a great edu- educational experience to really walk through all that, so that's where we're at with that. Um the sidewalk committee that I indicated I was gonna set up, I did um get the the walking committee that did that study in twenty-twenty-one. And when I contacted that, those committee people, they pointed out that this Wall Master Transportation Plan that came out in twenty-seventeen also talked about actually went through and marked where there were good, fair, and poor sidewalks at that time, so I asked that committee to look at that, check those out, see if there's been improvements. The good news is, any place that we have put in new streets, um then we've put in ADA accessible and good sidewalks, so there should, this should be updated and some improved. Their main thing is that many pedestrians, even in twenty-seventeen, were observed walking in streets in areas where uh it posed safety concerns for pedestrians and motorists. So that group will be reporting back to us and giving us that is Sharon Geigel, um Betty Hare, Donna Crown, and Chuck Sikora also helped with the walkability, so we'll see how his timeframe is.
Are they looking for other committee members? I don't wanna be on it, but I had, somebody had approached me and asked.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, Lex Heather Shaw, since he's kind of been involved in some of this, is.
He wants to be on the committee? Awesome, seriously. I will make them aware of that, absolutely. I gotta write that down, so I do not forget that. We take all volunteers. Okay, and um Prairie Village, a neat update on that, the Meals on Wheels are back up and running with the real-life cook, which makes those residents very happy, and also, um, a local company has um done the, it been awarded the contract to do custodial and landscaping at Prairie Village, so those folks will have kind of a personal touch there. And I continue to work with Pennington County Housing to move them um on some other things that were addressed to see if we can't get those conquered also. And lastly, I am presenting at the Energize Conference in Hot Springs tomorrow uh talking about lots of lots happening in Wal. That's my report. Are there, we're at item twenty-nine. Items for discussion, no action will be taken. Does anyone have any items that they wanted to discuss tonight?
I was just gonna say, and Garrett, we used to um you know, about this time, started personally, on all the speed limit signs would put a laugh with a red or orange flag, you know, on them, and they just to draw their attention to the speed limit signs a little more.
I think I saw a bunch of those we'll start with line street.
They still say we're doing trying to do something.
And are the red flashers working now on the stop sign?
No, I haven't got to that yet. I think the solar panel's bad, so we'll have to order a new one. But I will.
Thank you.
I did look in, been looking in, so portable crosswalk or mumble strips, so.
You can set those up at the Wake and Bake Live, that Kyle would have fun.
So, yeah, I have been looking around and and trying to figure this stuff out, so.
Um, I can um visit with law enforcement a little bit too about patrol and that. You know, I mean, just presence, not that it's gonna, I mean, I guess, like I said, I haven't seen him a whole lot before uh the jackalope was there, every once in a while, I would see him in that parking lot, but um shoot, I think, you know, a little bit further to the south, you know, and try to catch some of those people. Uh cuz I mean, if you get pulled over after passing that blanket sign that tells you how fast you're going, it's a little hard to argue. And, I mean, we do give out a lot of citations, but.
And I had reached out to Sergeant Swanson, too, and asked her to have, like um it was brought to my attention after school and heading for track or whatever. And she indicated that she had asked the deputies to sit um kind of across from Best Western there. This last few weeks of school, so. And they're willing to do that, if it works, I mean, but I didn't really track them to see if if they did, she said she was gonna have them do that.
Say something to, and I'm not trying to be negative and not saying the police shouldn't be there or whatever, but, you know, most of the time, those people are here. One time, you know, they come through, and, you know, I don't know, they're not gonna spread the word. You know, to slow down, that, I was just thinking, you know, like, you know, when come to Wal, you get pulled over, and I don't know really what that would do. You know, and I agree, you break a lot, or whatever, you shouldn't be pulled over, but how is that? How they gonna spread out, so everybody, I mean, you know. I live right there, and I'm speeding every day, and I get pulled over, then, yeah, I'll remember that, but you know, the, just the people coming in, it's, I don't you know, what good is it really gonna do to?
They, it se- seems like we should come up with other ways to slow traffic down besides tickets.
Well, like Garrett said, so you pick this car up, that's not gonna slow the next car that's, you know, coming behind you now, see if that guy got a ticket, they can be, yeah.
And that cop car sat across from my house for years, and it didn't slow them down. I mean, they don't, they honestly, they honestly don't see the signs, they don't they don't see the signs, so, but we will put those red lights on those and see if that helps.
Keep trying.
It hasn't before, so I don't see how it'll help still, you know, but we gotta do anything we can, I guess.
Yeah, we gotta keep trying.
Have more of those crosswalk signs there, I think they're green. Like triangle shaped, just though, I think it's a woman on it, so well, I'm gonna have to get some posts and some base, and we will put those up too, so. Your portable rumbles, how would they stay put? There's, you can actually screw them right into the asphalt with like a, with like a lag bolt.
But you can get them out for snow.
Yeah, yeah, then you just take the lag bolt out. Some of them are just a big long, like, flat piece, you can carry it, and some of them roll out. I just remember when it was front of Randy Walker's house, and how loud it was all the time.
That would actually knock up caps off vehicles when there were no. Randy used to kept quite a collection of.
I was wondering about trucks, if we put that other stop sign there on six trucks coming in from the south, and they stop, and then they have to start. That would probably slow traffic down, but it's I I don't know.
Zach mentioned having a four-way flashing red light. And I thought, maybe that's not crazy. Sorry, Zach. I mean, I thought, maybe, maybe that would uh
That's above the four-way stop?
You know, flashing red light? I don't, I don't know, isn't that a four-way stop anyway? Yeah. Isn't a flashing red light, stop and go?
Yep. And and if if they're looking up at the jackalope, if that's what we we think they're doing, they look up, then they might have a chance of seeing, oh, there's a flashing red light right next to here, you know.
I I mean a flashing red stoplight, streetlight, that gets your attention. Oh, I I mean, I I I imagine it it'd be be expensive, but it's uh, it is an issue, and I and I don't think speeding tickets is gonna solve it.
Okay, Garrett, you keep plugging away, then, you've you've got some ideas there, and see what what's gonna work.
Poles and pole light, right? Yeah, um, there's one pole already on the corner of Jay's house, I guess it just depends if a guy would wanna settle centered in the middle of the intersection, or you can just put it you know, on that, once, and so it's in the middle, but you'd still be able to.
Garrett, would it, it would, it need to be four-way, right?
Yeah, but you'd have to, I mean, if you want it in the middle, you'd have to put four.
Four poles.
Up there.
They're, they make a single unit that's on each side, it's a square. And on each side is a flashing red light that you could uh, I don't know how we, we'd have to look at uh how to hang it, but suspend it somehow with like cables or something going up.
Right, but you'd still have to have four poles to have it.
In the intersection.
You could run to the other corner and then plant it in the middle, so it could be somehow, so it couldn't shift back and get away with just. They want that pole on their property. Jackalopes, yeah.
And powerhouse over there.
Interesting.
All right, our next council meeting then is June sixth at six-thirty, and I, we do need an executive session.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, four in parentheses.
Okay, Zach has seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, call us out of executive session, do we have any motions um to move forward with the lifeguard hire?
We'd make a motion to approve the lifeguard roster and wages for summer twenty-twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, um any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries, is there any other other business uh to come before the council tonight? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.